Okay, Mayor Burke. Councilperson Conwell. Mayor Daley Jones.
Here.
Director Dever.
Here.
Mayor Gallo.
Here.
Director Juan. Mayor Kurtz.
Here.
Mayor Orkut. Donani.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Mayor Weelo. You have a quorum.
All right, thank you, thank you so much. So welcome everyone to our Planning Commission meeting for March fourteenth. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none? Okay, I'll move to the next item. It's approval of the minutes from the February eighth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Not sure if you've had an opportunity to review it or not, but I'll make a motion to approve those minutes without necessity of reading. Motion made, seconded, is there any comments? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion. Move on to the resolutions, Mary.
Okay, the first item is Resolution Number twenty-four oh three one four dash A. We're requesting the approval of the resolution authorizing Cuyahoga County Planning Commission, Ohio Public Works Commission, and the District One Public Works Integrating Committee to enter into an administrative cost agreement for the state infrastructure program for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. And just for some of the new members, this is something that we have done in the past, so it's just for this year, and I will turn it over to Allison.
Hi, Allison.
Hi, everyone. I'm joining you virtually this month. I apologize about that. The staff is requesting approval of the administrative agreement with the Ohio Public Works Committee, OPWC, and the District One Public Works Integrating Committee, DOPWIC, for the upcoming fiscal year, starting July one, two thousand and twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. The DOPWIC is tasked with evaluating infrastructure project applications and selecting projects through a competitive grant program. Cuyahoga County receives an annual program allocation of approximately thirty million dollars, and we get about forty to fifty applications per year. I will say, since the pandemic, it's closer to the forty side. The Ohio Administrative Code, Section one six four dash one dash one three three, permits OPWC to contract with an entity to provide the administrative services for the district integrating committees. County Planning has provided administrative services for the DOPWIC since nineteen ninety-one. This agreement today would allow county planning to continue to assist the DOPWIC to develop an orderly application process for submission, review, developing the methodology, selection and approval processes that meets the requirements of law, and allows for the political subdivisions throughout the county to compete for funding in the next program year. So I'll provide a little bit of background. Kevin, if you can go to the next slide. The state infrastructure programs began back in nineteen eighty-seven through obligation bonds, and the Ohio Public Works Commission was created in order to facilitate this program. OPWC's mission is to deliver its statutory programs with the greatest efficiency and highest customer satisfaction while maintaining a high level of transparency and accountability to Ohio's taxpayers. Next. So Ohio Public Works then split the state into nineteen different districts back in nineteen eighty-seven. This was done per capita, and this allows OPWC to administer the program in conjunction with local control, and the nineteen district integrating committees were formed, and District One is Cuyahoga County. So, next. The Ohio Vice Code allows for seven members on the District One Public Works Integrating Committee to represent the county and are appointed by the county executive, to represent the most populous city, which of course is Cleveland, and are appointed by Mayor Bibb. And then there's two representatives that represent the surrounding communities, and those representatives are appointed by the Cuyahoga County Mayors and City Managers Association. And then those six representatives all approve a private sector representative that is solicited through a nomination process. Go, next slide. So the state infrastructure programs, the ones that we, the DOPWIC oversees, is the State Capital Improvement Program, which is a combined grant and loan program based on funding from the general obligation bonds, like I said earlier. By law, the annual allocation of the skip funds, ten percent, is dedicated to loan. Those loans will then be paid back into the districts where they were lent to, and then go into a revolving loan program. So as those skip loans are paid. So those are the two programs, and those programs are for roads, bridge, culverts, as well as stormwater, wastewater, and water supply systems. And then the Local Transportation Improvement Program is a grant program that is only for, those dollars are dedicated for roads, bridges, and culverts, and those funds are based from gasoline taxes. Next slide. There is a small government commission, and the DOPWIC does have a small government subcommittee, but the subcommittee selects projects from villages and townships in the unincorporated areas that have less than five thousand in population so that they can get a second chance through the Ohio Public Works Commission, Small Government Commission. And the project applications that are not selected through the nineteen district integrating commissions from those small government communities have that second chance. And then, if you are not familiar with, you should be, there is an emergency program and OPWC reserves funding for emergency projects that arise directly out of catastrophic situations that threaten the public health and safety. And if you have those emergencies, you can feel free to contact me, but the application process goes right through our program representative and the Director of Ohio Public Works Commission. Next slide. So again, these are some of the types of projects that we see come through the District One Public Works Integrating Committee, bridges that need to be brought up to code so that they can function as originally intended. A lot of times, we have multiple projects that include both water and sewer, or water and road projects. They usually go hand in hand. Next slide. So in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, which starts on July first, we now have approximately seventeen million, two hundred thirty-six thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars for grants, and another two million, four hundred fourteen thousand, thirty-five dollars for skip loans. And then another six million, seven hundred eighty-seven thousand, fifty-seven dollars in the revolving loan program, and six million, seven hundred twelve thousand, one hundred ninety-four dollars in the local transportation improvement programs, which totals about thirty-three million, a little bit over thirty-three million this year. Again, as projects close out, if they don't use all the funding, it does come back to District One. So these are just a snapshot in time of the, of the costs that we have. Next slide. And so in February, the DOPWIC submitted fifteen projects, I believe, yes, fifteen projects for funding, starting July one, and three are bridge and culvert projects, nine road projects, and three stormwater and wastewater projects. Next slide. So the administrative services, there was in your agenda packet, and I believe it was on page twenty-two as a work plan and budget, but basically, the work that, that we seek reimbursement for is undertaking the work and activities set forth in the scope of work defined in the administrative agreements. Also included in your packets, attend any OPWC-sponsored statewide leadership event as necessary to maintain the level of staff proficiency. Provide the district and OPWC with the transcription of minutes, meeting notices, agendas, and any other necessary support services, and travel within the district as requested by the district to assist local subdivisions and attend and conduct meetings as necessary. There's still more, next slide. Under the direction of the district, initiate and develop project selection processes for approval by the district and the OPWC that will ensure that the recommended projects meet the requirements of the law, rules, or regulations of the Ohio Vice Code, as well as the Ohio Public Works Commission. And under the district, notify and assist all political subdivisions within the district of the opportunity to apply for financial assistance and be considered for the various funding programs. So today, we're asking, requesting the approval of the program cost agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission and the DOPWIC for funding cycle fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. And this will allow the county planning commission, the executive director, to enter into the contract come July with the Public Works Commission and the DOPWIC. And the total project budget is not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars. And again, county planning will be reimbursed from the work from July one, two thousand and twenty-four, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. And this work will really be geared for establishing the fiscal year twenty-six methodology and selection process. So I'm open to questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Allison, appreciate it. I'm gonna make a motion, and then we can entertain questions, if that's all right. I'll make a motion to accept or enter into this administrative cost agreement for the state infrastructure program for two thousand and twenty-five, seconded by Mayor Burke. All right, open for discussion. Questions or comments from anybody? I'd just like to say that the program, I've been involved in the program for probably about eight-plus years now. I think it runs very efficiently. There is representatives from the Mayors and Managers, engineers from the Mayors and Managers Association, City of Cleveland, and Cuyahoga County that participate in helping Allison in evaluating the proposals that come in. I think it's a very good process, and well over the years, I'm somewhat surprised that this budget specifically hasn't kind of grown, or at least some type of cost increase, because I think it's been stagnant now for at least ten-plus years or so. Allison, could you speak on that?
I think it's been stagnant since the eighties. I don't think that we, well, we, there was a time when we used all the money, and then we kind of ebbed back, and now we're going back to using it all again. I will say, though, that this money is encumbered in the allocation that we get of that thirty-three million dollars that I showed in the earlier slide. However, the OPWC just worked on some rule and language changes, and they did take out the exact number, sixty-five thousand dollars, and, and the new law, and I would have to look it up for the exact wording, but it's, it's now figured determined by the Ohio Public Works Commission. So it looks like they are entertaining maybe changing that.
Okay, that's great. Director?
To that, to that point, then, does, do we want to have a not to exceed this total project budget not to exceed sixty-five thousand?
Right now, that, that's the contract that they will supply to us.
They will supply to us, okay.
So that's what I would just mention in the, in the packet. You'll see an agreement template, because they will send their agreement to us for our signature, and so all those blank spots will be filled in once we get that contract from them. So they really wanted to make sure that we get paid July one retro if we need to, if it's not done in time. So the fiscal year, we operate on calendar year, they operate on fiscal year, so there's some little give and take on that one as well.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? I just wanted to say thanks to Allison for the thorough explanation. That was very helpful, and it's hard to understand for me, but you make it easy.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, there's motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, Mary.
Thank you. All right, the next item is Resolution Number twenty-four zero three one four dash B. County Planning Commission is requesting the approval of the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission's Revised Parental Leave Policy, Section nine point one zero of the county's, county planning's Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual. Did you do that? Sorry, Kevin. I'm sorry. Okay. So for everybody who is a new board member, again, just to let you know that County Planning Commission has our own Policies and Procedures Manual, because I report to you as a board. We are not Department of the Counties, so I do not report to the county executive. So we have our own Policy and Procedures Manual along the way, and over the years, we have referenced back out to the county, the county's policy manual. And so we, every time there's a change with the county's manual, we take a look at our policy to make sure that we're in line, or at least competitive with what's been done at the county level. So I worked with Wesley in legal to look at the changed policy for the parental leave for the county. So we originally had adopted our maternity and paternity leave in Section nine point oh in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and twenty-one, we brought this to the board to update terminology used to make it more general and not mother-father specific, and really meet the needs of the current family dynamics, and to better align with the county's policy. And then on February twenty-third, the county updated several components of the policy, including an increased benefit to employees for parental leave. So we wanted to take a look at that and align ours with that. This is really small. So because we try to be an employer of choice, we really wanted to take a look at our policy versus the new updated policy at the county. Our previous policy provided two weeks of continuous paid parental leave for full-time benefits eligible and part-time benefits eligible employees. It required employees to have completed one year of service, and they had to have worked at least twelve fifty hours in the previous year. So if approved, this policy will provide thirty hours per week of paid leave for up to twelve continuous weeks of paid leave for full-time benefits eligible and part-time benefits eligible employees. So now, the only difference that we see alongside of what the county has, the county allows this policy for eligible employees to be, have completed a ninety-day probationary period in order to be eligible. Because we updated our probationary period and the length of time it takes us to onboard and get employees ready to take on the work we do, we updated our probationary period to have it a little bit longer. So we're gonna align this policy with that probationary period that they have to at least complete, I can't even see that, no less than one hundred and eighty days, I believe, of their first day of employment. So that's the difference, that's the big difference with the counties. And then we had some other issues that we looked at. Previously, you had to use up, you know, you could reserve, thanks, Kevin, you could reserve vacation and sick time so that you had some time when you came back. We, the county policy, I think it, believe it said, Wesley, that you must use time if you want to be paid. So if you notice, it's thirty hours paid, so you have to supplement that additional ten hours per week if you want to be paid for the full forty hours. We modified our language a little bit to just say that you may, you're not required to use that, so if somebody wanted to just get paid thirty hours and not have to worry about using up time if they didn't have a big bench of time available, that they could do that under this policy. So we really do think it's something that makes us much more competitive as an employer, and it better aligns with what the county has done. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that.
Does change? I'm gonna make a motion to...
Joyce had a question.
Oops, sorry, Joyce.
This is, yeah, this is Joyce. I just want to share how great it is to see this, both from the county and the planning commission. We also changed our policy recently at City of Cleveland. We saw over a hundred people take, take in, most of them were men. So over a hundred were men. And so, you know, we really believe, and I'm passionate about how, you know, healthy parents equals healthy, healthy employees equals healthy families, and it's just an overall benefit to, to our public agencies. So, thank you.
Further? Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution two four zero three one four dash B. Second. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries, thanks so much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, I will turn the presentation over to Dan Meany and Kevin Leeson. I will give you this, to present our county, the two thousand and twenty-three data book. If you remember, some of you were here for our December meeting. We said that it was coming soon, and as the year came to an end and holidays hit, we really didn't do a big rollout of this data book, so we wanted to have the opportunity to just share some of the information with you today. So I'll turn it over to you, Dan.
Yes. I just wanted to mention briefly to acknowledge the, the team that worked on this. It was, I guess, a little bit of me and Liam Lovito, who's mostly our GIS specialist, but he is also really handy at document preparation. He helped us with some of the narrative, and so he contributed quite a bit. Kevin will talk in a minute. He is a planner, our, kind of our main data guru in the office, knows all the ins and outs of census data and other sources that can be tricky to work with at times. So I was just looking through it and some of the backup. And so in this edition of the, the data book, we have fifty indicators and probably a hundred charts that were prepared in Excel. And so we had kind of a mass production routine going. And in that spreadsheet, we had, I just counted, we have over fourteen hundred columns of data that was used to calculate percentages and groupings and so on. So it's, it's been an interesting challenge to work on that. So anyway, I just wanted to mention those couple of things, and Kevin will cover the details.
And I will say, we'll be sure to share the link with you after today. It's in here.
Yes. There we go. Oh. Okay. So some of you may be familiar with our data book series. If you've been around for a while, you've seen them. In two thousand and twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we did communities data books. They have data on each of the communities in the county and compare them against each other and see how we're doing. For two thousand and twenty-three, we took a different approach. We looked at the county level instead of the municipality level. So this gave us current data, as well as gave us opportunity to look at trend data. So our main motivation for doing this was to provide benchmarks for the communities. We wanted to be able to look at where our strengths were and where we had opportunities to make improvements. It also gave us the added benefit of looking at different data sets that weren't available at the municipal level and are, are at the county level. One of the main data sources we use is the American Community Survey from the Census Bureau that's published at a five-year level, I'm sorry, yeah, five-year level and as a one-year level. One-year level is only available for communities of sixty-five thousand or more population, which we can't use at the municipal level. So we were able to use the one-year data for this, which is another opportunity to look at that trend data. When we did this, we wanted to select some peer counties, and we had three main things we looked at when selecting those peer counties. We looked at the proximity, their size, and their typology. Obviously, proximity, we wanted communities in the Midwest and the Great Lakes region here. And size, you'll notice that Chicago was not in here, because Chicago was so much bigger than everyone else, that would have thrown off the scale completely. At the other end of the scale, we left off counties like Summit County, Montgomery County, and Lucas County in Ohio, and also the counties next, other larger ones that we left off were the ones, the counties for Grand Rapids, Michigan, St. Paul, Minnesota, and Madison, Wisconsin. As far as typology goes, we wanted to look at communities that have a central city in them. We looked at communities with legacy cities like Cuyahoga County and Allegheny County, and also communities with the newer educational government cores like Franklin County and Marion County in Indiana. We did not include large counties that did not have a central city. So Oakland County north of Detroit has about one and a quarter million people, which is bigger than a lot of these, but we did not include that, because that did not meet our typology. We wanted to include St. Louis, but we couldn't, because the city of St. Louis is an independent city, it's not actually part of the county, and that would have made getting the data for St. Louis County problematic. So as Dan said, this data book has fifty indicators, it's in six sections. You'll see these colors above each section there. We use those colors throughout the data book to help indicate which section we're in. As we go through some of the sample indicators, you'll see those colors highlighted for, in those sections. Each chapter starts with this overview. Sorry, that's hard to read on this. But it gives a quick overview of where Cuyahoga County stands in comparison to the other peer counties for that, in that section. Each line includes the name of the indicator, which part of that indicator we used to do the ranking. For that first line, total population is the same, but it wouldn't always necessarily be the same for something like educational attainment. We had to pick one piece of that educational attainment to do the ranking on. Score, and then the numbers. So here is a sample indicator, this one is total population. Each one starts with a name, a brief overview of why it's important, and highlights of that data. We also have our trend line here. The solid line is Cuyahoga County, and the dotted line is the average of the eleven peer counties, including Cuyahoga County. Most of the time, that goes back to two thousand and ten. I think for total population, we went back to nineteen fifty, since that was readily available. And then the bottom part has the current year data, both as a table and as a chart. So now we're gonna start diving into some of these sample indicators, or indicators. We'll have one from each of the six chapters here. So this is population age. So you can see that Cuyahoga County is generally older than most of the peer counties, has fewer children and more seniors than most of the other counties. And when we look at the trend line, you will see that Cuyahoga County also generally been older, or the red line is the seniors and the blue line is the children. So fewer children and more seniors than the peer, the average of the peer counties. Gross domestic product, we went and got that from the BEA, Bureau of Economic Analysis. That's the annual economic input, output, I'm sorry. And we adjusted that for inflation, and you can see that Cuyahoga County has generally been, outperformed most of the other peer counties. And when we look at the current year data, you'll see that it's not necessarily correlated with population. So we're about the same in the population, but the largest county in population is Wayne County, Detroit. You see, that's about halfway down the list. For the workforce chapter, this is the self-employment. We got these numbers from the Census Bureau's non-employer statistics. These are companies that have zero paid employees. So you can see, this one tracks closer with the population figures. And at the trend, you can see gradually increasing, and then dipping a bit during two thousand and twenty and the pandemic. It's worth noting that the self-employment numbers do include people employed in the gig economy, so that may account for some of that increase. For the housing chapter, we use a building permit survey data from the Census Bureau. So this is not an exact match for construction, it's permits, not construction, but it's as close as we could get. And you can see that in both the single family and the multifamily, we are near the bottom of new construction. Sure, I don't need to tell any of you about the challenges of housing construction. And in the multifamily housing, that is units, not structures. Again, and the trend, we have been consistently below the average of the eleven peer counties. Transportation section, our sample here is commute method. So there's a large number of people that drive alone, which is not surprising, a decent number of people who carpool, and then that purple one at the end is... And then that purple one at the end is people who work from home. That's what we did for the time series, is the people working from home. And you can see that spike there in 2020, 21, which is not surprising. And since we did this, the number has, they released numbers for 2022, and that number has declined a bit since then, but it is still elevated over where it was in the past. Land cover, we got this data from the Multi-Resolution Land Characteristics Consortium, which is a collaboration of federal agencies, and this uses remote sensing, some satellite data. And you can see that Cogga County is pretty well-built out there compared to some of the other counties that aren't as fully developed, which may also contribute to that lack of housing construction that we saw in comparison to some of the other peer counties. Seventeen, yeah, in Cogga County, yeah. And I think that's mainly the metro parks, would be my guess. Yeah, right. Yeah. And then at the bottom, there is Erie County and Buffalo, which is just a very large county, and it is not built out at all. So, as we mentioned, the entire document is up on our website at countyplanning@usarcounty. And what's coming next is, we are currently hard at work at the next edition of our communities. So we hope to have that out this spring, and be able to go back and look to see how our communities are doing when compared to each other.
Sorry, I want to congratulate you and the staff, Dan and Kevin and Liam also, and the great work everyone in the planning commission is doing and pulling this together. Just to one question in regards to, I would think that ADNOWAC, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, do, do they gather similar information? I, you know, I'm trying to recall if any of that type of information has come from them.
I think NOAC's perspective generally tends to be at the metropolitan area view instead of the individual county view.
So I would think most of the, the housing built, or purpose for housing built is happening the adjacent counties to us.
Right.
You know, I know that North Ridgeville is on fire. One of our employees resides out there, and it's just so much work going on. So I'm surprised, maybe it would probably be some valuable information to have it from NOAC also, but...
I think NOAC used to, they used to do a fax, fact book, but I don't know when the last time that was updated, so I think it's been a while. But yeah, we're happy to, and that's the thing, we want to share this data, and hopefully, when you are trying to build more housing or do other things in your communities, you can go back to this to say, here's how we compare to other peer communities in the Midwest. And so it gives viable information for that. Oh, come to the microphone, sorry.
We considered doing a regional data book a couple of years ago and realized we were stepping on toes with NOAC, and so we pulled back from that. And I think, too, it's better for us to be looking at the county itself because of all the things that are going on outside that are out of our control and so on and so forth, and focus inward a little bit more, so.
I have a comment and one question. So, I mean, it's shocking, but not surprising, the amount of housing construction and how low we are in the list, and as a self-reflection from the City of Cleveland, thinking about our vacant land and how we want to continue our transit-oriented development and upzone and increase densities as we should in our city for more housing construction. So that's a personal reflection from, from the City of Cleveland. My question is related to rents. And if, if you looked at rental, average rents across these counties compared to housing construction, because I'm curious if housing supply correlates with rises or falls in rents.
We did look at rent, and we also looked, we looked at ownership burden and rental burden and rental costs. So those are all...
They're in the book, okay, helpful, thank you.
Further comments, questions?
I will add, just because I had the mic, that we, we have a big vote tomorrow at the planning commission and then at council, hopefully in the next month, around Form Based Code, which will, is, is our big zoning reform effort in, in four pilot areas to see if we can get both the design that we want as well as the, the types of construction rates that we're looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just personally like to thank you and your team because of the heavy lifting that you're doing and knowing that what we're looking at at county level and seeing it, if it is successful in Cleveland, how it could be applied in other communities.
Okay. That's great, thanks again, really appreciate that. Okay, executive directors report.
Thank you. Yeah, and I do apologize, I know we were just together in February, and we're together today in March, and we'll probably be together in April and May, and then maybe we'll take a little break. So it doesn't usually happen that way, but we've got a lot of things going on. And it was really important for me to bring this parental leave policy forward to you because as I announced last time, we've got, Micah is on parental leave right now. And so it's not something that is retroactive, but he will benefit from the last two weeks of his leave, taking advantage of the new policy. So thank you for your support on that. Well, if you've noticed the new colors on our slide deck, we officially rolled out the new logo today. You guys got a brief preview at our last meeting, but today is the official day. Our website has been updated to the new colors and to the new branding, but we'll get to that in a second. But I did want to just announce, if you remember, last time we talked about the planning grants, that we received seven applications. We are awarding five of those planning grants in Cleveland Heights, Maple Heights, North Olmsted, Richmond Heights, and Seven Hills. Unfortunately, two of the applications we got were not eligible uses for full zoning code updates, but that, we hope that's something we can do in the future. So if you see here, Rachel will be leaving, leading Cleveland Heights. Nicole on our team will be leading Maple Heights. Micah, when he returns from his leave, will be leading North Olmsted. Megan will be leading Richmond Heights, and then Dan, and Dan will be leading the Seven Hills zoning map update. So that's why we're going to have a little bit of a cadence on getting approvals to enter under contract, into contract with these communities. And the staff is busy right now scheduling those kickoff meetings and trying to come up with a agreed-upon scope of services, a budget and a schedule. And so what, maybe just background for anybody who doesn't remember, the planning grants, the big point of this is we used to do it just for master plans. And then so many communities had their master plans done that we said, in 2022, let's do a survey of communities and see what the big needs are at the local level in terms of assistance from us. So it's not really a grant, and I said, next year, we're going to change the name because it really is us providing in-kind services to the community. There may be some cost sharing just so that we have buy-in at the community level, but it has worked really well, and so we're excited to kick off these new projects and get those underway. So logo and branding rollout, we had been putting together teasers. And so big thanks to Rachel and Kevin, who've been really working hard at kind of getting some teasers out there that a new look was coming. And so we did those last weekend, earlier this week, and today we launched the full logo and branding. So the logo to the left is our primary logo. Then we've got some seal options, because a lot of times we have this big square or rectangle, and it doesn't fit in nicely if we're joining other people in a group of logos. So we have that option, and you'll notice, you know, county planning is really the highlighted word in here because when we're inside Cogga County, we really are county planning. But wanted to have an identity, if we're doing things nationally or regionally, that we've got the Cogga name in there. So we really looked at the secondary logo, which is all the way to the right, to add inspiring county, Cogga's future when we don't use Cogga in our full name. So we're really excited about that. So thank you to the whole team that's been involved. We're excited to do this. We're working out some kinks with some fonts and some other things. But this was a first template. Thank you, Rachel, for getting our new board slides in, and we'll be working through some of those, all of our templates for our documents and all of our contracts and agreements. And wish I had a bunch of money to buy some swag and things, but we don't. So we're going to work within the budget we've got and figure out what we need most. So we are looking at just a few locals in the office things that we're going to be able to do, just add the logo onto, on our wall. Last year, we put our new vision statement, mission statement, and core values. We're going to add the logo as a vinyl to that. And then sticker on the outside of our window to replace our current logo. And then updating our sign that hangs over the front part of our office. And so we've got some really great prices, which is wonderful, even cheaper than the sign we got, how many years ago? 14 years ago? So as everything else seems more expensive for some reason, we got a really good quote on this one. So, yeah, and I just wanted to say thanks to the team, and Rachel has been awesome. So getting all these logos and having fun with it. So our new email signatures will be in effect today as well, so you'll start seeing those on our emails from the team. Also, the annual report, we are releasing next week. So yesterday, I did a video with the media guys upstairs, and so that will be the welcome to our online annual report, and it is a story map format. And so big thanks to Kevin and Susan, who've really been leading the charge with that and all the team that's been involved in providing input. So we will make sure that we share that link with all of you as it goes public, and we're excited. So we're excited for this year to come, but really wanted to make sure we capture the, the wonderful things that happened last year and recognition of staff and all the work that they did as well. So, yeah, so that's it. All right, and then quickly, I just wanted to extend a congratulations to Luke Oles on our team. So he is currently a Cleveland Foundation Fellow. We were lucky enough to actually have him start as an intern with us before his fellowship. And he's doing such an amazing job and really being, bringing a lot to the teams he's on. And he's in his graduate program at Cleveland State. So we made him an offer to stay on as a senior intern when his fellowship ends so that we didn't lose him to somebody else, now that he's all trained up and, you know, really contributing well. So that offer will extend through the end of next year. That way, we can keep him on the projects he's on and help him to be able to work and go to school with the flexibility with that. So we're excited to have him stay on. The summer internships, we posted those. We got almost 40 applicants for one position for our summer intern. So if anybody needs an intern this summer, let me know, because we have a whole list of resumes and other things. We did six virtual interviews this week. We've narrowed it down to the top two. One is actually an international student from Cornell, and I'm trying to figure out, I need to talk to HR and figure out if that's even possible for us to do as a temporary intern, but it would be great to, you know, have something like that, something new that we, we haven't had before. But, so hopefully, that will get decided, you know, sometime next week. And that, that position will start in May. Sydney Bacon, who's our current UC, University of Cincinnati Fellow, her last day is April 26th. So we want to make sure we have that continuous capacity from the intern position. So if anybody wants an intern, let me know. Also, the principal planner posting, if you remember, we did post this, excuse me, last year, and we really did not identify the candidate that we needed to help with capacity and help with some leadership among the whole team. Happy to say, we have 14 applicants right now. I haven't reviewed them, I don't have resumes and all of that information. It's getting processed through the county's HR department, but that position is posted until next Friday. So I'm really hoping we get a good candidate for that. We've had a few people reach out that seemed pretty qualified and let us know that they were going to apply. So I'm excited for that. So if you remember, when we talked about the budget, that was, we were not going to be funded for vacancies. And so the commitment from council really was, if you do fill that position, then we would have to come back and we'd have to make a request for additional funding for that position. So hopefully, that all works out this year, and we can continue on with a lot of projects and countywide initiatives. For the 2023 planning grants update, so we had four of those that we did last year. All of them are very, very close to the finish line, with the exception of Euclid, who is actually over the finish line. Rachel led that project, and the city has officially adopted that plan. It is going to be an addendum, is that correct, to their master plan? Amendment, addendum, addendum to their master plan. So this is exactly what we want to see happen. We do these plans, they get adopted, they can be then work on implementation. So we've got Warrensville Heights, a presentation was made to planning commission on Monday. Council meets next week to vote to approve that. Let's see, Lakewood has everything turned in. I don't know if we're going to have to present, but we'll see Megan's on vacation this week, but that, that report is in. And then, what am I forgetting? Fairview Park, yeah. So that is, the final draft has been submitted to the city. Even though Mike is on leave, we've got the rest of the team working on that, and that draft has been submitted to the city. So we are all, we're very close on wrapping those up, which is great timing to start on our new project, so. And then the only thing I wanted to mention on the 2024 budget update, the last time we met, we talked about a need to rebalance some of the budget line items. And so I'm happy to report that council did approve that fiscal agenda item. And so we were able to move existing dollars from one budget line item into other ones where we needed the money to cover other expenses and costs. So that was taken care of, and we've seen in the system now that it actually has been shifted. So that is great news. Any questions on that? Yes?
I don't know if we're going to get to this, but I've had some questions about the Urban Tree Canopy.
Oh, yes. Yes, so Allison gave her presentation last month, but it will be rolled out on Arbor Day, April 26th. And so the applications will open the following Monday, because this is a first time with the neighborly software where applications will be online in a portal. So they didn't want to open it on a Friday and then have a million questions and nobody there to help them. So that will be, what's the Monday, 26, 27, 29?
So will that be shared with all the municipalities at the same time, or do we have to let people know?
Yes, we will make sure, we post it, you know, through social media. We can send that out. I'll talk to Kevin and Allison, remind me of how we sent that out in years past, but that's definitely something that will be, continued to be announced.
Okay.
We did a press... Yes, Allison, no, I forgot.
Mary, I'm still here. We, we do work with the eighth floor because it usually comes out of the county executive's office. So we work with communications and do a press release. We also send out a mass email and post on, on our social media channels.
All right, thank you.
And I will also point out that I was at the Northeast Ohio Urban Forestry Conference last week, and Rocky River and Euclid both presented and were just raving about the program and showing off their results. So I've asked them to share their presentations with me.
Thanks, Allison. And I think much like Dopple, because things have gotten more efficient. Allison's been working really hard between last year's program and now to make things much more efficient in terms of application and reimbursement. And she's really taken the lead with this neighborly software in cooperation with the County Department of Development to really make it our own for the Urban Tree Canopy and make it easier for both applicants and us in terms of administering reimbursements.
Okay, any questions for the executive director? Nope. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to old business, any old business? Seeing none, any new business? Seeing none. I'll make a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All right, thank you, everyone, for attending today.
All right, so next meeting, April 11. We'll try and keep them short and sweet.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.